Today is November 26, 2014. The time is 10:00 a.m. I'll call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started, I just want to mention Commissioner Bartolo called me yesterday. He's doing much better than after he had his two more operations last week. They had to put additional spaces in. I don't know what all the problem was. But I did talk to him yesterday. He's feeling better. He's still under heavy medication for the pain and all, so he won't be joining us today, but hopes to in future weeks. Diane?
For today, we have 13 exonerations, $5,431.97 for tax years 2012, '13, and '14. And there's correction on exonerations for Harold McCully and Alexander Berg. We do share orders as in number 26, statement of services for Crane, Armstead, and Sackler. And also, there's a matter of the estate of William Park, which you can take up separately after this approval. And then it's about October 22nd. Vouchers, General County Fund, $45,491.9. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $36,980.49. Full Severance Fund, $59,774.49. Cap Muffler Purchasing Card, $349.45. Justin Ridge Park, $73.15. 911 Purchasing Card, $2,079.43. 911 Cav, $1,066.7. Law Enforcement Brokerage, $2,022.71. For total of $148,236.88.
I will move forward except on two items of the estate of William Park and the estate of Norma Kelly.
Norma Kelly's next one.
Next week.
Oh, that's next one. Never mind. I amend it to just the estate. I move forward except for the estate of William Park.
They moved to approve with the exception of William Park's estate. I'll second that. Now, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, has anyone here had -- doesn't look like anyone's here for the estate of William Park. Should we just hold that in abeyance? I discussed it with Judy yesterday, Wilshire County Clerk's Office on estates and trust. However, that's not anything that I could base a decision on at this time without someone making a presentation. So I would say we just hold it.
See if they come till December 3rd.
See if someone comes up before the end of the meeting. I don't know what else to do with it when even the petitioner doesn't show up. You can't really make a decision without proper presentation and representation. So that's my direction. You agree with that?
No, that's fine. If there's no one there, then we can refer it then to the December 3rd.
Well, yeah. Yeah. Okay, Renetta. You got a Thanksgiving stack?
Yes. I'll try to make it small.
What is it?
I've got two items for reimbursement today. The first is for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program that benefits the county's homeless for $18,953.06. That is for the month of October, 2014. And I also have the HUD grant for MAYSP, also for the month of October, for $603.52. That's the two items for reimbursement that I have there.
Move for approval. A second. Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I have three items that I need to read into the record. These were all due at the first of the week, and because the commission didn't meet last week, they weren't signed. They gave me permission to sign these, so I sent these reimbursements down. I just need to read these into the record. The first is for the VOCA grant for October 2014, $4,087.32. The Report Center Grant, also for October, $21,473.47. And the JABG grant for MAYSP, also for October, $2,037.33.
You've already signed those and submitted them?
Yes.
I think we need to go ahead and have a motion to confirm her actions based on all the --
Move that we confirm the actions.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renetta. Okay, is Tom here?
Yeah.
No one wants to come this morning? Are you already out eating your turkey or something?
Already, yeah.
Kelly, I appreciate, I mean, you're --
Sure, you're welcome. You're welcome, Johnny.
Oh, there's Tom. I thought you were out eating turkey already.
No, there's pepperoni rolls like Chris did.
There you go. We're ready for you unless you want me to delay this until I go through the rest of it.
That's fine. You probably recall that the county commission issued the tax increment revenue bonds for the Star City TIP project in 2012. And they were structured as drawdown bonds, and so, you know, interest only accrues on the amount that's actually drawn and funded into the project fund to pay for costs as incurred. The only amounts that had been drawn up to this point have been for the property acquisitions. And you remember, there were two main components to that project. There were some acquisitions of properties along the roadway there. It's basically a roadway improvement project, and they're requiring some hoes along the road to widen the right of way and beautification, streetscaping and things like that. They completed the property acquisition, but then the second phase of the project was the infrastructure and streetscape, the actual improvements. And they had been working with Department of Highways on some issues with stormwater and costs that DOH was needing to pay for. And I think that they're either -- they have agreement or moving forward with reaching agreement with highways on that. So they're planning to go out to bid on the remainder of the project in the spring. And we had a provision in the documents that basically said they had to draw all the money throughout June 1 of 2015. And they think they're not sure that they're going to be able to complete that project by that point in time, and so therefore, they want to extend the available draw period to the end of next year. United Bank is the sole bond purchaser and bondholder. They're agreeable to that change. And so, in order to put that into effect, it would just require some document amendments. So what we have is a resolution, an order of the commission, which would essentially authorize a single revision in the trust indenture to extend that draw period from June 1 of 2015 to December 31 of 2015 in order to facilitate their completion of that project.
So it's just a matter of adopting this resolution?
Yes.
Does Diane have a copy of that resolution?
Do you have a copy of that? Okay.
How long is it?
It's very short. It's two sections.
Two sections. Okay. Is it too long to read in the record, or is it just?
Well, it's two pages.
Well, we don't have to read the recital. I could read the captions.
Yeah, could you read the titles?
And then I could read the two operable sections.
Okay. Why don't you do that?
Why don't you do that instead of reading the whole resolution?
Yes.
Because it's been submitted before.
I agree.
So it's a resolution order authorizing the execution and delivery of the first supplemental trust indenture, binding between the county commission of Montague County and United Bank, supplementing and amending the indenture of trust between those two parties dated December 20, 2012 pertaining to the county commission of Montague County Tax Increment Revenue Bonds, Series 2012, Star City Project Number One, the bonds, and approving other matters with respect to such bonds. And then Section 1 basically says pursuant to the order heretofore adopted by the commission that was authorizing the bond issue and the Tax Increment Revenue Financing Act, this resolution adopted, there are hereby authorized the execution and delivery by the president of the commission, the first supplemental indenture, potentially in the form attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, with such modifications, et cetera, as may be approved by the president of the issuer, and the execution and delivery for the purposes of extending the period of time from January 1, 15, to December 31, 2015, in order for the issuer and the town of Star City to draw the remaining funds available under the bonds. And the resolution would be effective immediately upon adoption. And then we just have the form of the supplemental indenture attached, and you'll see the changes there in Sections 1 and 2. Basically, Section 2 is the operable provision, just changing that project fund draw period to December 31, 2015.
Do we have to get the Development Office approval after we pass the resolution, or do we just pass the resolution and it comes into effect?
Pass the resolution. This is consistent and within the existing project plan, which has been approved by the Development Office. So all we would need is the adoption of the resolution. I would ask you all to go ahead then and sign the supplemental indenture, and I'll get it to Randy Williams at United Bank for him to sign, and for Kathy Smith at United Bank as the trustee for her to sign. And then we have a council opinion that we deliver in connection with these changes.
With the changes. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the resolution and to authorize the president to sign? Is it just one signature, you mean?
Yes. And the county clerk signs, and it's more of an administration.
Yeah, county clerk. Yeah, that's sort of a, be right.
A testing.
A testing.
Two signatures. Two signatures.
Yeah.
Okay, so move for approval of the resolution and also authorize the signature of the president or the president.
President, pro temp.
Pro temp. Two sign.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Anything else we need to do on this, Tom?
If I could get you to sign these, then --
Come in, Jane.
I've got some counterparts here. Diane? Get down. Yeah, there we go. I suppose I could probably leave these for Karen, I guess, for the county clerk.
Karen.
Karen. She won't be back for the next week. Got it. So when she returns, if she could have signed, should I leave these with you?
She'll be in the mound.
Okay. Who goes with you? And then if she could sign, when she returns, so.
Did you get my message yesterday?
I did.
Okay.
And I went ahead and communicated that, and I think that's been put in place. We're waiting for it to see confirmation.
So I don't know.
That's what I was going to ask you, in generically, if you hear anything immediately, if there's any sort of confirmation, you're hoping to get that by the end of today before Thanksgiving.
Send us a text or something.
That will be a very big Thanksgiving present for this community.
Yeah, but we're hoping to be able to accomplish that.
I believe everything's looking good now.
Yes. Yeah, this is glass, but we're hopeful.
Yeah. And I want to just publicly say, and since we can't say as much yet, that I really appreciate, and in fact, I was going to say during the meeting, there's another issue. I probably want to thank you and also Eldon Callan for this negotiations that are going on, that hopefully will be a tremendous Thanksgiving present for Montague County, and we're waiting to hear.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Do you have a resolution?
I, uh, I don't think it's necessary for you to stay home.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know of any reason he needs to stay now.
No.
I'll then, if you could just send me, let's see. Do you need an original for your record? Okay, so if you want to keep one original, well, actually, I'll need all three because I need to get the other party. But the resolution is done, so for purposes of --
We can hold the resolution, but the other one, you have to send an original back to us?
Yeah, so for purposes of your record and the net book, I think all you need is the signed resolution. If I could get the other two of those, the other two originals, I could take that back with me, and then that way the resolution is all signed and taken care of.
Do you have to go ahead and sign this, and then I'll have that for the record?
How many of those did we get?
I just have one that's been signed to Eldon.
Okay. All right, so I've got these three. Do you want one of these as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, then when Karen signs, if you could send me as many originals as you can.
I need to sign those.
Something on the trust indenture and the resolution, the certification. Yeah. Then, do you have, here, let me read. This is just the attachment, it's a separate document. So that's what's actually being signed, in addition to the certification of the resolution. So if you could just get Karen to sign those, and then he's already signed one.
You sure you aren't taking my bags, Kelly? You're making me sign all these things. Not my first one. You don't get my first one.
Is that in this section right here?
Yes.
If you like, I'll just stick that there.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you. Have to have a little levity every once in a while.
Yeah. So if you could just send those originals to me when you have them, and I'll get United Bank's signatures, and then I'll get one fully executed original to all the parties, and I'll keep them. All right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
You have a happy Thanksgiving?
You too.
Appreciate all your work.
That's all right, Ellen. Thank you.
Okay, next thing we got is executive session set. We will delay that till the end of the meeting, like we normally do. Correspondence. Letter from assessor's office regarding correction of border review order. What, if you read the letter here, in our, actually, it was in the Board of Assessment hearings, which is October, which is interesting. We got the border review and equilization in October, basically have the same thing, but they call it Board of Assessments. Basically, there was a property located, there were a couple of properties located that we had adjusted the values. Now, the actual orders had the correct adjusted values, but it didn't have the original assessor's value correct. So it has no adverse action other than to make, it's clerical error, to make the record correct. So we, this is where we act as judges, we suas ponti, on our own, can make those corrections without a hearing or anything because it's clerical and it has no adverse effect on the property owner or on the rest of the taxpayers in the county. So I ask them to just write a letter requesting that we move to make that clerical correction in those two orders so that the record is correct.
I'll move that we make the clerical review of the board orders and make the discrepancies clear on the two properties at 152 Mineral Avenue and 1356 Saberton Avenue, as submitted by this letter.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Do you want, do you have a copy of this? Okay, so now we have that as part of the record.
You've got a copy. You can give it. Okay. All right, took care of that. Okay, who's going to handle the requisition? You, Diane?
I will. I have quite a few. They often in birds, and a little confusing because there are different counts to the tip.
Right.
First one is, although it's his ballpark project, it is administrative expense. This is for Setown Johnson, $6,758.77. Can we do them individually or all together?
Let's do all the town center together.
Okay.
And then we'll do the others separately.
Right. The second is requisition for payment number three. This is also to Setown Johnson, $6,758.77 administrative expenses in Mercy Town Center. Requisition number four, this is $419,156.37 to be dispersed to Cornell Stone Company, which is also for the TIP project, ballpark. And the next one is requisition for payment number three, administrative expense fund, $142.50 to Setown Johnson. Those are all four.
Move for approval. Second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Now, the next one is payment number 12, Mont General Hospital. This is actually being paid by Mont General. This is not, we're not approving this. I had a copy of it, and --
It's just a notice?
It's just a note that it's being paid. So there's no action on that one.
Oh, okay. Just acknowledge, okay.
And the last one, payment number eight, Masera Corporation. I was expecting it this morning, it's not coming yet. For the Justice Center.
It's not arrived for the Justice Center. Okay, so they'll have to wait. They won't have it for Black Friday tomorrow, Black Thursday, whatever we call it nowadays. Okay, then I just need to sign those four that we approved.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next thing's on our list, procedures and policies, proposed amendments. We've adopted, we've had policies and procedures at least since I've been on the commission as to the conduct of various meetings and all. Tom, you want to speak to the amendments you're seeking?
Sure. First of all, we review this each year, so this is a common practice. We need to have rules and procedures. This was an agreement between the three of us, between Robert's Rules of Orders, no rules of procedures, and coming up with some sort of actual rules of procedures that were documented. What we've done is the best of all three. I do want to make a suggestion. We attended a meeting last week, the county commissioners' meeting, and they came up with a really good idea, and I want to look at modifying our rules. On the second page, it says at the conclusion of the above items, the public comment period of the meeting will be open to those in attendance. I would like to reconsider, well, or make the change with your approval, and basically putting it after first, second, third, fourth, fifth paragraph on the first page, which is after we, the administrator discusses the consent and approvals, it would go right before regarding grants. So that way, and the reason that it was explained, and also I think it's worthwhile, if you have individuals who want to come speak and they wait till after the meeting, it's after the fact of whatever issue you're dealing with. In this way, at least they get their point across so we can hear it. Again, it isn't a two-way conversation, but then we have that information so we know ahead of time, so we have that information so if somebody wants to give us something. So with your approval, I'd like to amend the rules so that it would, instead of being number --
Well, actually, other than the, the other changes in here, we have done informally, we've always, we have always done, I mean, in terms of agenda items and administrator in terms of recognize, we've always done that, but it hasn't been in the rules.
Right, so, well, yeah, I was going to do all three.
But you want to, you want --
I want to do this one first.
I know. Which one you want to do first?
I want to do this one first. Basically, move the comments from the public, which is number nine, and put it as basically right after three consent and approval after budget revision, so it'd be like, kind of like 3A. And then, or four, you know, four, and then Renetta and all that might add to those. So that way, even if there's something that Renetta was coming up with a grant and someone wanted to speak to that grant, it just covers it. And I think this opens up the meeting to the public more. I think it's how the other counties are doing, and I think it's a worthwhile suggestion.
Were you given a copy of this?
Yes.
I want to recognize Commissioner-elect Ed Hawkins, who's present here today.
Was also at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, he attended the training along with all of us. I want to ask any comments you might have on this. Have you reviewed it, or do you want to make a comment now?
I have a review.
Okay.
I have a couple, thanks, whenever you're finished.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to, well, let's, I'd like to move that first, so at least we get that covered. So we're just moving it to from number nine to right after the budget consent approval documents.
Well, I really don't have any problem with it, and I think you have good justification. These rules shall be reviewed again in January.
Right.
But if that's what you want to do for the rest of the meetings, I have no problem with it, so I'll second them.
Thank you.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, so that was one change.
Yes.
Also, as a result of the meeting, we learned that in some counties, they do the pledge and the meditation before the opening gavel.
Yes.
Want to consider that. The other was seconding motions.
Right.
Consider that, and also limiting the language in the minutes to cut down on the paper.
Right. The discussion, and it's like anything, you put two people in a room listening to the same thing, you're going to have three different versions of what was said. That discussion, I've been familiar with, as you know, as a board member there. I've attended now all three of their training sessions, so I've heard it many different times. That focuses more on prayer. If you have an actual prayer, that, we don't have a prayer. We have a period of silent meditation. I know Commissioner Bartolo had brought up the idea of beginning in prayer, but then you've got the problem of, it has to, the prayer has to be diversified, which means we've got to include totally inclusive.
That's all we're going to do the entire meeting.
And I don't know, I don't, I don't know all the categories, but we'd have to get an encyclopedia and figure out all the recognized religions and, and I'm very comfortable with having the moment of silent meditation on pledge to the flag as part of the meeting, and people can use that opportunity to do whatever they want, silent meditation.
Okay, just primed up?
Yeah. There were four issues. There were four issues that we were booking now.
Everything is entitled to be discussed and everything, the people of the county, they need to know what we're talking about. That's why, you don't do things behind closed doors, that's why you bring it up out here.
The issue about the second, I think might be, if you go back to the second paragraph that we have in red, may resolve that issue. Basically, what we have done, but we're, we like, as part of amending the rules, it says any commissioner is permitted to request an item on the agenda after the proposed issue has been discussed with at least one other commission member. All items must be to the administrator before noon on the Monday preceding the Wednesday meeting. And the reason why I like it is, that's the official meeting. If it doesn't, then we put it on the work session, and that's the key issue. So all items are being discussed, but if we don't have two people who want to bring something up, or something that sometimes happens real fast where it's suddenly dropped and all three of us would not be able to have enough information on it, this gives the work session the time.
Which is what we've got.
Right.
I mean, it's been the common practice.
We just never put it in writing, so.
We never put it in writing.
So what I'd like to do is adopt the common practice as written before, as now practiced, as procedure.
Who's had a motion?
Yes, I so moved that.
I'll second. Motion second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I think then that would jump.
It's hard to vote against something that you pushed for and you got done a long time ago.
And I want to get, but I want to get it very clear. If it isn't put immediately on, because the meeting is an actual working meeting, when you put it on the work session, then you get more information, and I think that really helps out and clarifies, and it gives everyone a chance, all parties, especially when I call it the minority too, who may still want to express it because they may be able to convince one of the other individuals, here's the reason why I want to do this, let me put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, there was that, and, okay, follow the, the president will recognize elected officials and department supervisors who are in attendance. We just have to be --
I started that, I started that as president, I think. I think I was the one that started that.
I mean.
I think I did. That's something when I was president, I just started doing. It's something we've been doing, it's been a practice.
Then if you want me to --
If you want to put it in writing, you'll just put it in writing.
Actually, that was just reversing it because -- Actually, that was just reversing it because originally, Commissioner said give it in reports first, and then you called him, elected officials. You're just calling upon him.
First, okay.
It's just rearranging it.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay. So you're just flipping it.
Yes.
Okay. So you just, do we need that now? We've already done that.
Well, the, well, you, you're putting it in writing.
Okay.
It's what we're doing, but...
It was in writing, it's just reversed.
Right. So we're now recognizing elected officials and supervisors before the commission's report. And so move.
I'll second, have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Great.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Cleaning up the paperwork. We'll be revisiting this in a few...
Oh, oh, yeah. The other interesting thing that we did not realize was the minutes, where we are very specific in the minutes, they are now stating that all you really need is the motion, the second, and the vote. And since we are being taped, we have now the tape of all the minutes. So therefore, they felt that it was, uh, doing double duty and, and not a waste of time, but you could find time to do other things. I, I don't know. What do you, I'm not sure.
I don't wanna, I, I...
You don't wanna touch it at this time?
I don't wanna deal with it this time.
Okay.
I think, I think we've got, we've got a process. I think maybe we can review some of the minutes to see what this means as to what actually what, and maybe address this in a work session after the first of the year.
After the first year, okay.
When we can set, we can look at the minutes and say, well, the, and maybe we can enlist your help, Janet.
In fact, yeah, and Janet's helping this.
And say, okay, this is the way the minutes are. Now, this is the way they would look if we followed the procedure that the, uh, the professionals at the County Commissioners Association say we should follow. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not totally, totally sold. Well, I'll just leave it, I'll just leave it at that. Uh, I think it's, we, it's something we need to think about more, more thoroughly before we just adopt something, because I said it...
After Mr. Hawkins is on, maybe even we could all three sit down and look at it and see if there's some issues that we wanna look at.
In a work session.
Okay. That sounds great. Okay.
Okay. All right. Let's take care of... Okay. New business, uh, discussion, uh, alternate route for ingress and egress at Cheek Lake Elementary School. Glad to bring that to you. Do you have that email? We, uh, we have developed over the last year and a half since we worked out the Department of Bridge issue. Kelly, smile on that one, right? A very good working relationship with the Department of Highways, and we're, we're very appreciative of that. And, uh, in regular communication with Mr. Ray Ersh and Harry Burson on various issues. They have, uh, there has been requests by the, uh, the school board for opening up a second ingress and egress to Cheek Lake Elementary School. Currently Crosby Road, that comes in off the Tyrone Road, is the only ingress and egress to that school. They have suggested the possibility of using Meadowview Lane, uh, as a second ingress and egress and improving that road. Meadowview Lane is part of, um, what's the name of that?
Imperial View.
Imperial View, um, out there. And they would, they wanted to, I thought I turned that off. They wanted to, uh, get our input, uh, they wanted to get our input on the, uh, on this decision. And we discussed, discussed in a previous work session, thus, and since that association no longer is in existence, uh, well, it's in existence, but it's not active, I should say. I mean, it's still on the books as an association. And my understanding, Meadowview Lane is part of that association, I thought that, that what we needed to do to, and that was to formally announce this, uh, this review and invite anyone that would have, uh, be in favor or object to this to come to a future meeting and have, not have a quote, public hearing so much because it requires more formality, but just, uh, to have a meeting, a public meeting, to invite the people that may live out there or people that go, have kids going to that school, to come and comment us, to us so that we can relate that to the DOH and their decision-making process. Does that sound all right?
That sounds fine. Do you wanna do that on, like, when we do, like, an afternoon on Wednesday, or do we want a separate meeting? I don't know if we ever want a separate meeting.
I don't think we need a separate meeting, I just...
We do it in the afternoon?
Do you want written comments, emails?
We could have both.
Are you actually setting up a public hearing?
Well, I was gonna set up a public meeting, but we want, we would invite written comments and, and emails too. I was just set in a particular meeting to put it on the agenda to hear any comments or input about this so that we can, uh, uh, so we can forward them on to, to Mr. Ray Ersh to...
December tenth is the second, two Wednesdays from now. That would probably give enough time between the newspaper. You know, we could do that, say, two o'clock, the three, two to three o'clock.
Eldon's leaving that day for...
Never mind.
...for the Treasury Situation Council.
You can?
So we're gonna have a work session on the 10th.
What about the 17th? Okay. That gives plenty of time. December 17th, say, two o'clock.
Seventeen.
As part of our work session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I...
All, all we're doing, we're not taking any formal position on this, all we're doing is trying to gather the information, uh, for Mr., Mr. Ersh and pass it on.
And that way, people could either publicly or they could submit to us before December 17th their questions or concerns so we could have a better understanding.
So you wanna advertise this in any kind of a notice or just using the press?
I think we just use the press, and I think we're good out.
And post it on the website too?
Yeah.
Post it on the website.
That would be good.
I, I think, I, when you look at the map, it makes logical sense.
Right.
But when you open up traffic to a neighborhood, some people might be upset.
And you need a two-way. You always need an ingress and egress, just in case something happens or an emergency. And I believe all the, the residents or the people who go to the elementary school will want that too.
Okay. The next thing on the list, I, I can't, I, I, I can discuss more in the executive session in more detail because of, uh, uh, the competition exception in the, for an open public meeting. Basically, the west side of the TIF is, uh, we're, we're, we're to the point where, uh, we, we, we need to, to move ahead on the development. And the TIF, the, the west side of the TIF was, was really my, really my baby as to the extent.
Yes, it was.
It, it was, I wanted it all the way to Mountain Park. We got it all the way to Mountain Park. Because of that, the Development Office and DOH, uh, and, uh, the property owners on the west side have asked if I got involved early on in the discussions, and this is clearly on the, clearly on the future vision, where no fi, no finalization, that if, uh, that if the commission would be willing to authorize me to be the commission's representative on these discussions. And as I've always done in the past, I come back, report to you, I get your input and all. But they asked me if I would, uh, be willing to attend various meetings that they set up in Charleston to begin discussions of development of the west side.
I've been speaking with, these past couple months, I can say I've learned through the process that the governor and those individuals in charge want one individual of the three to represent us. So did you need a motion to, to authorize?
Yeah, I, I just wanted authorization.
Okay, I'll just move on to our eyes, and you will, will be our representative to deal with these negotiations and agree back to us.
West side.
Yes.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Glad you were not me. It's become very...
Yeah. Well, I, I, I have a, I have a vision, and they just, and they just thought that it would be better to involve me early on instead of...
I agree.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. We switch this around. We're all right on here, right?
Yeah, for today.
Okay.
No, this is the way it will be.
This is the way it will be. Right. That's what I said. It's the way, I thought we changed it.
We did. It just wasn't included in that...
It just wasn't.
We just did it official.
Right. So now it's official. Okay. So Kelly, you're the, you're the lone representative of the rest of courthouse here. You wanna report on all the departments for us?
Yeah.
Actually, I have nothing to, uh, to report to them.
Okay.
It's kind of quiet. It's nice.
It is kind of...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay. Commissioner-elect, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Just happy to be here. Wish everybody a wonderful holiday in D.C.
Thank you. Reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Uh, yeah. First, uh, for those of you who don't know, um, it, it's sad to report, but hopefully things will get better. Jim Stallings was operated on yesterday. He has a, had a tumor along the brain, and it was sudden, it was quick. They think they got it in time, so, uh, I am just hoping that, you know, I thought some prayers go to him and his family, but I think people needed to know he is an integral part of this community, and I know people are concerned, and it just suddenly came up. But he did sound pretty good today when he wrote, wrote me, but I just wanted the people to be aware of that, and I thought some prayers are with him. The second, again, I just, I reiterated earlier and what Eldon kind of alluded to, I do personally wanna thank, and it was Tom Ammon, Rob, I apologize his last name.
Also.
Also. And Eldon are in the midst, we're in the midst of probably one of the biggest deals ever to face Montague County. Um, we are moving forward, and it could be one of the, one of the fantastic Thanksgiving presents that we could give to this county, and we are waiting to hear and move forward. And part of what Eldon is doing is continuing this process, and hopefully we will be able to make an announcement very soon. Um, I'm just very excited, and I just also wanna wish everyone a safe, uh, and thankful Thanksgiving. Also, my condolences to the family over in Westwood, and hopefully we can rectify the situation that is, that is growing in our community, and hopefully we can find alternatives rather than having to have a funeral. So hopefully we can work on those issues. Thank you.
The, uh, I guess what's on everyone's mind is, or at least been on my mind is Ferguson and what took place out there. I, uh, I don't wanna speak to, to the wisdom of the way, the way things were done out there, but I do wanna recognize that we are, just as you mentioned, uh, the problems at, uh, Westwood and the very sadness there. We're not immune to those, those kind of problems, so I think all of us, both as elected officials and community leaders, um, and must always show a voice of reason and, uh, and keep all of those, uh, people that are suffering. And it's sad, it's sad, the number of people that are losing their business. For, for, for what? I don't, I don't know. But I, I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I think people in the, uh, I think we are very fortunate here. I'm on workforce, uh, as well, and, uh, we again come out with the lowest unemployment rate of, in the state of three point four percent. We're growing, we're developing. We need to be thankful for all that we have and thankful for one another. I wanna wish you all a happy, happy Thanksgiving.
I have one more item. I just got a text that, some great news for Montague County. Amanda Pazden was just named education chair in the House. And with this being an educational community, it'll be good that we'll have someone who represents us and look forward to that.
Who's the transportation chair in the House? It was Margaret Stoudt.
Haven't, haven't seen her.
Have they announced that yet?
Uh, they're probably announcing them right now. That's what I just got.
Okay. Chris Wal, Chris Walters is the transportation chair in the Senate. If people that know him, I've become very good friends with him, uh, when he ran for House of Delegates here, uh, back in two thousand eight, I believe it was. And I, I think we'll have a, I think, well, I know we'll have, because when I went down and appeared before the, the joint transportation committee, the House and Senate, uh, Chris Walters was on that and came up and talked to me a good bit afterwards about different things we could do, so I think we're, uh...
Things are looking up.
We, we lost, uh, we lost Bob Beach as the chair, but I think we gained a friend in Chris Walters. Oh, screwed up already. You're supposed to hit me with a paperclip. Sorry about that. Do you have anything else, Diane? Renetta? Do you have any?
Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and their families.
Okay.
Lots to give thanks for.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the public? Comments from the meeting?
Nice to see you again.
It's good to be back.
Tom, Tom, Tom was given his job, appeared one, appeared one time, and decided he's moving back to New Jersey.
Moved to New Jersey. I said, what did you guys do to him?
You're tougher than me.
That's right.
So I'll be back for, uh, the time being, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I think some good issues coming up. I think you'll be thrilled to be working with them.
Okay. We need a motion to...
Move to go into executive session pursuant to personnel.
Six nine eight four eight.
Six us nine eight four, that's correct.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're going into executive session for a short bit.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. Okay.
Move to go back into regular session.
Uh, second that. Uh, then motion, second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're back in regular session. Any further business? Hearing done, do have motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Uh, second, have a motion, second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. You're adjourned.